I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're just, we're really running a couple of minutes late, so we'll go ahead and get started. Before I call the meeting to order, though, I'll invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Mike Lawson will bring the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we just say thank you. Thank you for last year and all the blessings you put upon this city and all the wonderful things that happened. And, Lord, we could not have done it without you. We ask you, as we move to the night and have issues before us, that give us all the right thoughts and all the right things to say and the questions to ask, Lord, and at the end of the day, that everything we do disglorifies you. And in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mike. All right, now I'll officially call to order this regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. And to start things off, I'll ask our city clerk, treasurer, Sabra Jeffis to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Here.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
Randall Herriman.
Here.
Mark Fujerus. And our city attorney, Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right. Thank you, Sabra. We do have a quorum, and we are at item four on the agenda. And this is the item that the council places on each regular city council meeting agenda to hear comments from our residents, if we have residents that would like to address the council. And for this time, it is only concerning items that are not already on tonight's agenda. Items that are on tonight's agenda, you'll have an opportunity to address those at the time they come up. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Counsel, what's your pleasure? If there are no changes?
If no amendments or corrections are moved, they be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second to approve the minutes. Are there any other questions or changes? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, minutes are approved. Thank you. Item six, your procedural motions.
I move A and B.
Okay, go ahead. It's no problem if we want to read that resolution in full. Okay. So we've got a motion for A and B. We'll read that one in full.
We can still do it.
Yeah, we can still do that without changing it up here. Yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please. Oh, wait a minute. Never mind. I forgot about this. Call for the vote. All right. Yeah, Ernest, why don't you address that?
Counsel, I have a small request to make, if you'll indulge me. Item 17 on the agenda is an ordinance accepting the annexation of certain property in the city of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas. And item eight on the agenda is also an ordinance annexing certain property in the city of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas. I failed to put those two items together on the agenda, so I would request that we move item 17 up to be item eight B.
So moved.
Okay, motion is second. Can you guys throw me something up there for them to vote on? Okay. Call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0, and I appreciate that.
All right. And thanks, guys, for being so quick to the draw there. That's good. You're learning this a lot better than I have, this electronic voting system. All right, item seven. We've got a, I'll go and read it, a resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Planning Commission. This is, be no stranger to probably most, if not all, of you, Garrett Harlan, who did previously worked in our city attorney's office. He has, he applied for an open position on the Springdale Planning Commission with Dale Tyler's. Dale Tyler had served for two full terms, and he's stepping down. And, and so this is a resolution making an appointment to the Springdale Planning Commission.
Move the resolution to be adopted.
Second. All right, we have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you. Is Garrett here?
Yes.
There he is, back there. Thank you, Garrett, for your willingness to serve. Item B is another resolution approving the reappointment of Ray Cardiell to the Springdale Planning Commission. Ray's about to, with this approval, will begin serving his second term on the planning commission.
Move the resolution to pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? All right, call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure if Ray was able to make it or not. Is he here? Hey, Ray, thank you as well. All right, item eight. I'll turn this over to our, eight A and B, over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eight A is an ordinance annexing certain property into the city of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-601 at sec and declaring an emergency. This is 56 acres located at the southeast corner of Apple Blossom Road and Highway 265. And the petitioners are here, represented by counsel, and this would come from the Benton County into the city of Springdale, and there's a map on red page.
Do you move 17 to eight A? Is that what we're looking at?
No, we're looking, we're doing eight.
We're looking at the original eight A right now.
We're looking at Van Zant.
Yes, yes.
Yes, this is the Van Zant property. It's 56, 56 acres at the southeast corner of Apple Blossom and Highway 265. And I believe I read, I believe I read the title.
Move the ordinance to be adopted.
Got a motion a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? All right, call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0. Has an emergency clause?
Move the emergency clause to be adopted. Second.
Okay, call for a vote on the emergency clause.
Carrier 7-0.
All right, thank you. Welcome to Springdale.
Item eight was item 17, now is item eight B, is an ordinance, an ordinance accepting for annexation certain property, excuse me, into the city of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas pursuant to Arkansas Code annotated 14-40-609. This may look familiar to you, counsel. I believe at our last council meeting, the property adjacent to this to the north was in Cave Springs. We passed a simultaneous detach and annex ordinance. This is a parcel immediately adjacent to that, 11 acres in size, excuse me, that's being annexed from Benton County into the city of Springdale along Wagon Wheel Road.
Move the ordinance to be adopted. Second. Have a motion a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience need to speak to this? All right. Let's call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0. This, this particular ordinance does not have an emergency clause because a different procedure was used, so it will go into effect in 30 days.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for our planning commission report and recommendation. Patsy Christie, Director of Planning and Community Development. Patsy?
We only have one item tonight, and that's to tell you we will have plenty at the next meeting. We just have one tonight. The item tonight is a final plat for Hawksview Estate. Planning Commission reviewed this plat, recommends approval of the final plat. Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the final plat of Hawksview Estate to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance to pass.
Second.
We have a motion second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Counsel? Anybody in the room? All right, call for the vote.
Carrier 7-0.
Move the emergency clause to be adopted.
Second. Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause.
Carrier 7-0.
It has that emergency clause because there's pending action on that piece of property.
All right. Thank you, Patsy. Item 10, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney, Ernest.
Thank you, Mayor. At the December Planning Commission meeting, there was a request to rezone a piece of property located on Highway 71 North near West Morris Avenue from Agricultural District A1 to Manufactured Home Park District MHP. I believe that request was denied by the Planning Commission by a vote of nine to zero, and the petitioner has filed a timely invalid appeal of that rezoning denial to the city council. Their appeal letter, I believe, is in your packet along with the map of the property and a verbatim minutes from the planning commission meeting. And I believe Mr. Gibson is here to speak about this rezoning appeal.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Ernest, council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight and to appeal the planning commission's decision. We've got a presentation, we've got hard copies, if anybody would like one, instead of on your screen, we can pass those out, and then I'll just give thumbs up maybe when it's time to rotate slides on this, but...
You've got a clicker there that you can...
Okay, so I can control it. Perfect, perfect. So I want to first off to say that I personally take full responsibility for why we're here tonight. Lessons learned through this process along the way, but I did not anticipate some of the challenges that came up during the planning, Planning Commission's discussion, and definitely underestimated the value of being present and being able to tell the story and give more information about what we're trying to do. And so here we are tonight. I know you've got quite a bit of information in your packet from page 50 to somewhere around 72, 74, but we have prepared a presentation to walk through to continue to tell a little bit about the story and why this request is important to this project, and we believe benefits Springdale as a city. So a little bit about who we are real quick. All right, so this is a local group. This is myself being a third partner, and then we've got Dr. Lance Manning, who's been a physician in the community for 30 years, and then Brian Lloyd, who's been in the community since graduation and doing real estate projects throughout, throughout the market. So, and I think it's important to know that we are generational in this community, and we are thinking about what's best for this community as well as delivering a sound project, obviously, for ourselves. We do have experience in this space. We went out in 2020 in July and purchased our first RV park as an investment group in Farmington. It's 24 slots, two and a half acres, one rent house. We learned how to operate these type of projects, and then we found an opportunity to purchase what used to be called Motor Inn in Springdale, just north of Morris Avenue and just north of Straits Lawn and Garden. That project was 47 RV slots, one rent house, and 9.6 acres. And so we've been in this business for about four years, going on our fifth year of operating this, and so we feel like that we've got good experience, and we've learned a lot about how to operate these type of projects. Couple of things we'll discuss tonight, we'll quickly review, I'm not going to spend a ton of time on the request proposal. That's inside of your packet. We'll talk about the improvements, not only to the park, but operationally, what we do to run these parks at a high-quality level, and then we'll talk about the benefits that we believe this project brings to Springdale with hopes of your consideration for approving the zoning request. As you can see in your packet, this is a little bit of a unique piece of property in Springdale because it's got that split zoning. So even though it's one parcel, the front part of it is zoned commercial and the back part of it is zoned to the A1. The actual RV park that exists today that we're looking to expand is really split between those two different zones. And so part of the RV park that we have today is already sitting in this, this A1 zone. The zone, obviously, that includes RV park is mobile home. You know, we hope that you don't get caught up on the fact that that's just the name of the zone. That's not what is intended to be put on this property by our Ozark Canopy Group. The sole purpose of this rezoning is for the expansion of our existing park. We believe that that, that's a quality amenity to bring to Springdale, and so I just want, we seem to get caught up sometimes in the dialogue about it being a trailer park, about being a mobile home park, because that's just how that zone is titled. But again, this is for RV park expansion. This is just a quick shot of the layout. I know it's included in your packet, but I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. We are looking to add 50 slots, a bath house, an extra entrance in the back. We've got green space, detention ponds, and what we believe is a well-laid-out park that brings light, it brings activity, it brings just a great place for RVers to come and stay in the city of Springdale. One of the other keys to this project is, I think we can all talk about Morris Avenue. Morris Avenue is a street that borders south of that property. It starts out as a two-lane road coming off of Thompson, works its way down to a one-lane road, and then feeds the subdivision behind it. Within the scope of this project, we are planning, and it would be required by Planning Commission is that we do our part to renovate the north side of Morris Avenue, which would then bring that street up to the code with sidewalks, gutters, and the things that need to be done to help widen our portion of that street. And so I think it's easy to make the argument that from a safety, security, from emergency access for both police and fire, it would definitely improve that street that has been, I think, a burden for the community for a long time. And so that is included in the scope of the work, and I think a major benefit to be considered when we're making this decision. The other piece of it that has talked a lot about inside of the packet is the alignment with the future land use plan. We believe that it does align with the plan. It is a combination of residential and commercial with some light residential, obviously. It's, it's not permanent residential, but it is the opportunity for people to stay the night, stay the week, stay the month. And so we believe that it actually aligns to that future land plan. And when you look at it being in commercial business as well, that's, again, adherence to, to that plan. It's a great transitional piece from commercial on Thompson all the way back to single-family residential because of that transition going that light residential through there with the combination of a little bit of the commercial activity. So we believe that it fits that plan very well. A couple of things that we've done since purchase. First and foremost, rules, regulations, camper standards, those type of things elevate the type of quality of park that exists. We've also put into place a rigorous screening process for applicants. We do background checks when we have somebody that wants to be a part of our space. We, we have added Wi-Fi, we've added security cameras, we've got onsite management, we've done a lot of work around the park to clean it up from landscape to fence to signage, and spent a lot of time trying to, to elevate the operational component of that park. And so from an investment standpoint, we have turned around since purchase and been able to improve the quality of the park. The other factor to that is that we have raised rental rates, and so that in itself brings a different type of clientele into the park. And so we're at a competitive rental rate with the other RV parks in the area, but that is something that, that obviously that impacts the tenants that come into play. We've got a website that we'd be happy to put up there that shows drone footage of the park. We've got still shots, obviously, in the presentation, but if anybody would like to see after, after we go through this, be happy to show the website. You can see that drone flying through there for the quality of it. We've also, the last bullet point, we've done quite a bit of work on the electrical and the plumbing systems just for reliability inside of the park as well. Couple of key benefits that we believe this project brings to Springdale. Number one, it's development of a well-managed, aesthetically pleasing RV park, adding an amenity to Springdale to bring people to our town. We have traveling nurses, we have traveling contractors, we have recreational campers, and we've got folks that maybe are in a transitional period of their life that come in and stay in this park. And so it does provide an amenity and a, and a good, solid living option for that category of individual. From an infrastructure, I've talked about Morris Avenue. That is a huge benefit, I believe, to the subdivision behind us, and the travel up and down Morris Avenue from a safety, fire, police, all of those things. It improves a street that is not today currently on the radar to be improved by the city. Smart land use plan, we've talked about that transition piece, and then at the end of the day, it still helps to contribute to the economic growth of the community. I don't believe that there's any other RV parks inside the city limits like this one where that has the ability to expand, like we're talking about expanding. And so I believe that, you know, that is something that makes it an attractive place for people to come, stay, because it's in close proximity to where they potentially work, instead of saying outside in the county if you are a, a traveling contractor, a traveling nurse, or somebody that is here temporarily for a job. So we've got a couple of quotes just to, just to show from a Google standpoint, you know, back when we had purchased, our Google ratings weren't that good, but over time, we've been able to improve the quality, improve the performance, and, and you can see through comments from various tenants that have stayed with us over, over the years that, you know, they're taking the effort to make these type of public posts about their experience in the park. I've got a couple other, both partners are here. I've got Brian and Lance. Molly with Odyssey Engineering is here as well. If you guys want to say anything, great. If not, we'd be happy to open it up for any questions the council, the mayor, or the community behind may have about the park. But we appreciate your consideration and...
Thanks, Derek.
Sure.
Did anybody speak out against this at the, and read the minutes?
Yeah, we had, we had some, some input at the meeting itself. Let me remind you that what they're proposing is a great-looking project. But when we rezonate to MHP, it is not rezoning it for that to go in at that location. Once it's rezoned, and you guys, some of you, Aaron, I apologize, you haven't heard yet, but you'll hear it many times, whatever you consider to be the worst case, it's allowed in that zone. If that's okay, then we can rezonate, because we're not rezoning it for this recreational vehicle park. What's allowed in, in an MHP as a permitted use would be cultural, recreational, and health facilities, institutional facilities, a manufactured home park, a parking lot, a home office, an RV park, and a church and synagogue. Those are the permitted uses. There are only two other conditional uses, which is utility facilities and home occupations. If this was coming in as a conditional use in the A1 zone that it's already zoned, then we would be looking at this setup, as that's what we're going to do. The problem is, when you rezonate to MHP, you open it up to all those other things. I think that's a concern that everybody has, that somebody could come and ask, offer you $10 million tomorrow, and it could be we're back to going to a mobile, to a manufactured home park. That's the problem with opening it up. And that's the only two places a recreational vehicle park is allowed in the city's code right now, is at a permitted use in a mobile, in an MHP or a conditional use in an A1 zone. So if we feel like it's something that should go into some kind of commercial use like the front, then we need to amend a zoning classification and put it in there. Otherwise, we're opening this up to different kinds of uses if we go to the MHP and they don't come in as a conditional use for staying in that A1 zone. Okay?
Patsy, if this did, you're saying if it's, since it's agriculture, it could come in, in as a conditional use, but that conditional use would, would cease to exist with the existing owners. Is that not correct?
Well, normally, a conditional use is granted to that owner at that location. There is a provision in the ordinance that a conditional use can be changed to a permitted use by council action, so it could stay as a, as a RV park. And I would think we would do that once we know it got established and it has everything that goes with it. But again, opening it to MHP just opens you up to everything else that's allowed in that zone. That was, I think, one of the concerns that the planning commission...
So other than the semantics of whether it's MHP or, or A1, it would be permissible either by right or by conditional use to have it there?
Right. It is by right in, in a A1, as, okay, let me, let me, don't say this without looking, okay? It is a conditional use in an A1 zone. It is a permitted use in an MHP. Okay? Just to clarify, that's the difference we have with this situation.
And if, since they were denied, if they're denied tonight, can they apply for that conditional use right away?
Yes, they can apply for the conditional use because it hasn't been, it hasn't been looked at yet. And with the conditional use, with that, we'd have to have that site plan, they've already got it laid out, we would need to make sure it meets all the standards for the conditional use. It would have the same requirements for the spacing between them that they've already looked at and the street improvements and all that. But it would be, when it's conditionally approved, granted to them at that location only.
Mr. Gibson, what, what's...
Don't leave.
Come on up here, Patsy. Stay up here, Patsy.
I'm just going right here, I'm not leaving.
We'll ping pong ball this for a minute. No.
You first.
No, so, so we have talked, we've been working with, with Patsy on this project for probably two years, off and on, trying to find the best course of action for both the city and for us as investors. One of the things that, from a conditional use perspective, is that it is restrictive upon a sale. And so from an investment standpoint, you still want to have the opportunity, when you carry out, you build a project, is that you would have the opportunity to take that to market if the opportunity presented itself. And so at that point in time, to my knowledge, the conditional use does not travel to the potential buyer. They would have to go through their own process to be approved under whatever parameters they need to be to move forward. So it complicates things from our perspective to go down that path.
Would, would not inhibit you right now, though.
I'm sorry.
I said, would not inhibit you right now, but you're looking at future sale possibilities. Is that correct?
So if, it's, it sounds like, from what I know about the conditional use, is that that would allow us to move forward with the park, but there's extra steps, and there's things that have to be done down the road that are not a guarantee for us if we chose to try to sell that after development.
Okay. But from the city side, I've also noticed that the next owner's going to come in and do the same thing that the last one did, because all of those conditions go with it to the next owner. That's why a conditional use is given to one person at one location, so we continue. That is not a right, a use by right.
Patsy, did you mention the, I may have missed it, the possibility, if the, if the council wanted to amend the ordinance, to put RV park in a commercial zone?
That would take an amendment to whatever a C2 zone, if you wanted to...
Right, right. But to me, there's a big difference between an RV park and a, and a mobile home park.
Right. And it's quite interesting, because the supplemental regulations for an RV park is in the commercial section of the ordinance, not in the residential section, which is kind of unusual.
But if, if, if we put it, if we, if that was changed and zoned commercial with the ability to put a, to have a RV park there, then Derek, wouldn't that, wouldn't, wouldn't that help the, help your group with the, in the, in the event you wanted to sell because you'd have a commercial zoning?
Sounds reasonable, yes.
Now, again, I will tell you, if you rezonate to C2, it's not C2 for an RV park, it's C2 for anything that's allowed in a C2.
That's true.
So again, you have to talk about...
Well, could we not create a new, could we not create a new zone for RV parks? It could be a subset, a subset of the C2 zoning.
That, that was the first thing I thought of, but then you're, then you're still, I don't know, I was trying to put myself in the, in the owner's shoes about the ability to sell later, if they decide...
Well, if you create a new commercial zone that was RV parks only, it can't, it can't be done. It's just that when we start setting up new zones for one particular use, it really can be get out of hand in a hurry. So the next one comes in...
Well, bottom line is, with this zone that we currently have, we might not ever grant an RV park, because...
That's true.
Everybody sitting here is hesitant to approve a mobile home park. But so it seems to me like this is a pretty good situat, pretty good time that we might want to consider that. What about changing just permitted use under the C2 zone to allow that?
You could. Again, when you go to C2, you're looking at anything that's allowed, and so you're putting it deeper off of, off of 71.
But it's still, it's still a commercial zoning, which would, with, if we just changed the permitted use, that would solve the, the problem, because it is a commercial property if it's a, if it's a RV park.
Yeah, that's true. The question is, in this case, would you want that commercial to go that deep? That's something you have to think about. That's something you have to think about.
Yeah. An RV park is a separate use unit in the zoning ordinance with its own set of specific regulations. But like she said, they are contained in the supplementary district regulations for commercial zones. So you could theoretically make a Use Unit 30, I think it's Use Unit 30.
Use Unit 30 is a permitted use in a C2.
Exactly. You could amend, you could amend the ordinance to do that.
And then the issue becomes, do you want the C2 to be that deep? And that's what you have to think about then. And any place that's on C2 could have an RV park. I'll agree, since I've been here, we've never rezoned a piece of property MHP. That's just something that hasn't happened. And I guess it was put in when that Use Unit 30 was created, because we have some mobile home parks that have RV parks with them. And that's how we got it into the MHP, so that they could expand the RV park in the MHP, because they couldn't before, because it wasn't a permitted use, if you want to know how it got there.
It hasn't been changed to 2007.
Yeah, and there was a specific RV, mobile home park that wanted to expand their RV section. And the way it was written, it couldn't do it that. So we made a new use unit for it, put supplemental regulations for it, and added to MHP.
Did you say earlier, I'm not sure if I heard this right, that you said that we could look at making that permanent, that use?
There is a provision, and the conditional use is not appealed to the planning commission under Section 12 that says, "A conditional use may be granted to a use, may be changed to a use by right in the zoning district upon approval by the planning commission and the city council. The conditional use application shall indicate that the applicant is requesting the conditional use be made a use by right on the subject property, and the planning commission shall recommend approval, modify, or deny the use of by right at its discretion with the conditional, with the conditions and safeguards as are appropriate under the section." So they could apply as a conditional use and apply for asking.
The commercial zone. It'd have to be zoned commercial, correct?
No, right now, it could say A1.
It could be a conditional use in A1?
And then this specific one would be made a use by right in an A1 zone, if they requested that. That's not rezoning it to C2.
Seems like that's the.
And that would be permanent?
To this piece of property with the conditional use conditions that were given to it, yes. That's the way I read that. Ernest, do you read it that way, too?
Yeah. To me, quite honestly, I think the best thing to do, to me, that kind of puts the developer out on a limb, in my opinion. To me, the best thing to do, if the council shows to do this, would be to add a Use Unit 30 as a permitted use in a C2 zone.
How does that put the developer out on a limb?
Well, he's not going to get any guarantee that they're going to switch it from a conditional use to a use by right at some point in the future.
It has to come back to the planning commission, then back to the council, in order to make it permanent, should they decide to sell.
And he's spending a little bit more money on the front end.
Why can't you ask for it to be permanent now?
Not permitted under the use.
The conditional use request could be submitted, and along with that could be a request to make that conditional use, use by right, subject to the conditional use being approved.
But the same time period involved, you could amend the ordinance.
If you had a use unit, it'd be clear.
Yeah, I agree. I think that.
We have a use unit. It's, it's just only, it's only, yes.
Just move it into C2, call it good.
Do we want to take it out of MHP? Do we want it to allow it to be a conditional use in A1 and a permitted use in C2?
I think you want to leave it in MHP, because a mobile home park may have recreational vehicles in it as well.
So it would be a permitted use in MHP, a C2, and a conditional use in A1? Is that what we, is that what you're asking us to put together?
Yeah, but that depends on what the, what the parties want to do that will appeal the other. That's not what's before us now.
No, that's true.
Well, Derek, my suggestion to you is, as you heard me say, nobody up here really wants to rezone a piece of property in Springdale to MHP, which, you know, I'm not saying that would never happen, but it's, it would take the perfect situation. And I'm not sure this is the perfect situation. And I'm not trying to speak for everyone, but I'm just telling you, I don't know how much time you have, and how long, how long would it take to do that amendment, Patsy?
Well, we have to direct the ordinance, have a public hearing on it. So if we get it in the newspaper by Wednesday, we could hear it at the February Planning Commission meeting. It could come to the council the following Tuesday. That's as soon as we could do it.
But you're looking at three months down the road.
Talking about March.
To be safe, say three months.
And so in the end, if I was.
The planning commission meeting is February the 4th, so we could be in front of this council at February 11th, city council meeting theoretically.
Amelia had a.
Submit their application for rezoning before the ordinance is, after the ordinance creates that. So they would submit the 15th of February, near the rezoning in March. That's as soon as you could hear that new rezoning.
Let me make a suggestion, too. I know we're talking around a lot and got some good ideas, but we've got, we may have some people here that want to speak to this, too. And I'd hate for them not to get, get an opportunity to speak.
Another possibility, Mayor, would be for the applicant to ask for this appeal to be tabled, kind of let it ride, so you're not giving up on it, and let this other process play out. And then, you know, if it can be done.
How do we handle the appeal?
If he could table the appeal, then.
Withdraw it at some point in time.
If they get the other thing worked out.
Would that work, Ernest?
If that's the applicant's wish, yes. We could, yeah, you could theoretically table it to the February 11th meeting. And I'll even throw another wrench in it, Patsy's not probably not going to like this. She talked about changing the ordinance and allowing the rezoning application. You could, you could allow him to do his rezoning application. It would be contingent upon the ordinance being amended, and it might speed it up a month for him. Just throwing that out there.
We can do that. It's not a good idea to start doing that, but.
Mayor, I think we need to hear from the public if people have comments.
I do, too. I would hate, even if we table it, I would.
Derek has anything further, first?
Before we open it up?
No, I'm processing. I like what I'm hearing. There's a lot going on back and forth, but I think it sounds like where we would ultimately end up through the modification to the ordinance is that we would end up with a Unit 30 permitted use under C2 would be the goal, which would stay with the property permanently. And so I think that, and I'll look at my partners, but I would imagine that we would be more than willing to be patient to accomplish that. And if it took a tabling of this appeal to do that, we'd be happy to work with Patsy.
Not take a table of this appeal, it's just that you might, why not? Why not table it? That way you have both options.
Okay. You guys have any comments?
All right. Derek, let's let a few folks make their comments. You may, they may ask something you might want to address.
Okay.
So is there anyone, someone that would like, yes, come on up. Please, if you come up to make comments, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Bernice Blake, and I live at 1149 Sunrise Avenue. And I was here with the denial of the last request. Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Could you move that microphone over in front of you a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
Is that better? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So my backyard borders on the proposed property. And I have two concerns about this agriculturally zoned property being allowed to be changed to a commercially zoned property. My first concern is that this current business is failing to follow the city's laws and ordinances. This RV park does not follow the ordinances in three or four main areas, and now wishes to change the zoning of this property so that this business can push its way into my residential community. I have photographs that definitely do not look like this. They fail to have concrete in the common areas where the vehicles come and go, creating soil erosion. They have failed to give the RV trailers and the motorhomes, they need a concrete slab or push down rock to park the vehicles, again, preventing the soil erosion. They have failed to give the RV parks, the RV vehicles, they need a left 10-foot space between each vehicle, so that when the awnings and the poparts are pushed out, they are creating a cramped living area for the transient residents. They have failed to prevent water from sitting in common areas, such as the city's ordinances. But they want to expand this business into my neighborhood, bringing with it the current issues of ordinance failure and the social issues. And if this is a transient living, then why do they need 20 mailboxes in the RV park? I am a nurse who works at the local hospital. I have a master's degree in nursing, and I am trained to observe and to trend. I have observed the people that come into this, into the hospital, and I observe the social problems that they bring with them. The trend over the last three years, which I'm studying, shows an increase in PCP, fentanyl, alcohol abuse, and violent crimes, some of them associated with gang violence. Allowing this business to expand into my neighborhood allows these social problems to live on my back doorstep. A few weeks ago, my neighbor was alone in her house. Her property also borders along this property. Her husband was away on business. Two men jumped over her fence, attempted to kick down her back door. Thank goodness, her husband had placed a heavy piece of furniture across the back door, and the sun's dog was visiting and staying with her, and thus prevented these two men from entering her home. The police were called, and they said it appeared that those two men ran in the direction of that RV park. My dogs run the property line, my property line, all day and all night, barking at the people roaming around this area, high and drunk. If I bring my dogs in to get some peace and quiet, then I have my shop and my shed broken into, and my husband's tools stolen. I don't want to live in fear for, in my neighborhood, fear for our safety and for the children of our community. By allowing areas like this, these commercial businesses to expand into our neighborhoods, by allowing the property to be rezoned, and this property was grandfathered in, at the sale of the property as agricultural, then our property prices start to decrease. Our safety starts to be placed in jeopardy. And I'm asking again for this council to deny the rezoning of this property to prevent a commercial business from entering into our residential neighborhood and leave the denial in place. I'm asking, when does no mean no? And with every appeal, I will fight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, would you allow me to ask Patsy a question before? Patsy, do we have, do we have requirements for mobile homes, whatever the zoning is now? Do we have requirements on, like, do they have to have slabs and how many?
We have standards for, for a mobile home park and RV park.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say mobile homes. I meant RVs.
Yes. There is required for a service building. They're required to have, you know, paved driveways, paved slabs for them to hook up. They have to have certain.
There's spacing requirements and things like that.
That's the supplemental instructions that are, supplemental regulations that are in that commercial area.
Did that, I'm sorry, Jeff, are you done? Did that drawing that Derek showed, it complied with all our?
Well, it's just a drawing. We haven't measured it out.
Right, but it would all have to meet those standards.
They have been told that.
So I wanted to assure the lady who just spoke that what's going on there, or what's happened in the past, is pre-development of this property. Because they're, I mean, detention?
Well, they would be required to do detention based on the new areas. But they're not necessarily looking at making any improvements to the existing.
Okay, okay.
Right. You guys don't intend to go back and pave and all that stuff. Now, the drainage will probably have to be addressed for the entire site. But it was my understanding that they didn't intend to go back and do paving of the original sections.
But half of it is in A1, right?
A good portion of it is, yeah.
Is it the back portion?
Let's see if I can go backwards.
Closer to the neighborhood?
Part of the existing, where that drive that comes down to the, to the south is in A1. I think that dash line that's on there is the difference between the A1 and the. Yeah. Yeah. You have to come up here.
Hey, Derek, come on up to the mic, please.
Just a couple things. It was Miss Blake, right? Appreciate your comments and absolutely listening to everything. So the concrete slabs and the concrete work, that's all included in the new park, right? Those are design standards that we would have to abide by.
And which is the new part, Derek?
It would be the left-hand side, red line.
Okay, so it's back closer to the neighborhood?
All the expansion would comply to all the city standards for
Gotcha.
current standards for RV park development. The existing park, that's all grandfathered in and has been there a long time. Over time, we have invested money to improve, to try to deal with these type of issues. Absolutely. From a water standpoint, yes, detention ponds would handle any type of drainage that comes down through those shaded areas there. As for the safety of our tenants, the safety of our property manager, and the safety of surrounding neighbors, that is of a high priority to the ownership of this park and our property manager. So anytime that there is an issue, we are quick to act to evict. We are quick to act to call local law enforcement to help us handle the situation and to deal with that every day. And so that is by far one of the priorities of the management of this park and the ownership of this park. You know, some of the things that we're commenting on, you know, people have rights to their opinion. We don't know where, it's a big piece of property, there's a lot of people in the community, and so things could happen that have nothing to do with our RV park or our tenants. So.
I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
We appreciate y'all's time, and honestly, thanks, Ms. Blake, for coming. And we hate that there's been some crime in our neighborhood and that those folks ran toward the park. But Derek was a big part, honestly, of a lot of the improvements in the park. And I can tell you, putting in the Wi-Fi enabled us to put in cameras and extra lights and all of those things. And the reason that we want to expand it is frankly, we're over capacity. There's a waitlist because of the good work that's been done. And if it were a terrible place to be, where there were many, many problems, people are not going to want to continue to come in. And I work at the hospital as well, and I can tell you, it actually provides, especially for the nursing residents we have, because there's a shortage of nurses, and we appreciate them coming to our community. And a lot of times, this provides for the month or a few months they're able to come in and work temporarily, and as well as for the contractors, which we need in the community. It's an introduction to Springdale, frankly. And so we take a lot of pride in that, and a lot of pride in the work that Derek and the team has done. And I think all of y'all know where this is. There's a big difference between the way this looks and what goes on there now versus when it was a motor in. And there's privacy fences we've put up, and we've not been required to do any of these things. We just wanted to make it better. And we did, and that's why there's a long list, and the long list is why we want to expand it. So we want to continue to improve things, and obviously, any expansion for the park that's over there to the west would include all of the required design standards and before we were able to be able to take and get our occupancy in that, in that business.
Okay, thank you. Patsy, what would be the screening requirements for the new, especially the new portion that's closer to the neighborhood?
Oh, commercial has to be screened from residential with an obag fence. And with trees and stuff that, that grow above it to create a canopy up to 20, up to 20 feet.
Okay, thank you.
That would be required. And any buildings would have to meet commercial design standards if it's put into a C2 zone.
All right, council, what are your thoughts? How do you want to move this forward, or move forward with it, is a better way to say it, I guess? To table or to, I really?
I think tabling is a good option.
Give them an opportunity to come back and see, maybe with a different option?
Doesn't, doesn't the applicant have to request to table it?
Yes, we've got, well, yeah.
So I think, I think that is a, that is a very acceptable plan from our perspective. And so we would like to table the appeal of the rezone of the MHP, allowing us time to work with Patsy and team on the plan by changing the ordinance to, what? 30, mixed use 30.
So would February 11th work to bring this back?
Yeah, that works for us. I mean, if it takes just a little longer, that's fine, too, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then, you are instructing us to develop an amendment to the C2 zone to allow. to allow a use unit 30 as a permitted use.
Forbidden use, yeah.
And stay with the conditions that are set up in the supplemental. Okay. And it still will remain as a conditional in A1 and a permitted use in the MHP.
And that would go to planning commission before?
It has to go to planning commission with the public hearing.
For, to the planning commission meeting in February.
Right.
And then to the council on the 11th.
And fortunately, the submission deadline to get stuff in the newspaper to do the public hearing is tomorrow. And we'll write the, the public hearing notice to amend the ordinance and it will be heard at the February planning commission meeting. Okay?
So I think that's, I think that's what we're suggesting. But I just want to make sure that you understand, Derek, that, and people in the audience, that we are suggesting that our zoning ordinance might need to be updated to, to allow for RV parks. But that doesn't necessarily mean, just because we're asking the planning commission to look at this, doesn't necessarily mean we would approve it. These people would still have the opportunity to try to convince us that this project or this, this piece of property should not be rezoned.
To C2.
They still have that opportunity. I mean, we're not approving it tonight.
And I know you're in a hurry, but I think it would be better for all concerned if you didn't submit the application until the ordinance gets approved. Don't start that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think we'd need a motion.
So I move that this, this appeal be tabled?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion to table and somebody seconded, I think. Did I hear a second? Thank you, Randall. All right, are we ready to call for the vote? There we go. Thank you.
Carry seven zero.
Okay, and just to reiterate what, what Councilman Watson just said, it'll, we will have every opportunity for those who are against the project to come and speak against it at that, at that meeting. Okay? All right, thank you. Item 11 was committee of the whole. And, and I'm gonna, Ernest, are you gonna read this? Why don't you read the, the resolution and, and then council can do their pleasure on it?
Thank you, Mayor. The title of this resolution, and I'll read the resolution in its entirety as well. But the title is a resolution recognizing the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. by naming and designating a highway overpass to be named for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is widely recognized as leader of the modern American civil rights movement and espoused a nonviolent philosophy striving for freedom, justice, and equality. Whereas on November 2nd, 1983, President Ronald Reagan signed a King holiday bill into law designating the third Monday in January a federal holiday in observance of Dr. King's legacy this coming Monday. Whereas in 2011, the Martin Luther King Memorial in Washington, DC was dedicated, which was the first memorial to honor an African-American individual on the National Mall and was designate, and was designed as a space to contemplate Dr. King's legacy. Whereas Dr. King's life was tragically cut short in 1968, but his vision for freedom, justice, and equality lives on. And whereas the City Council for the City of Springdale, Arkansas wishes to recognize Dr. King and his legacy by naming the Watkins Avenue Bridge Overpass, which spans Interstate Highway 49 after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council for the City of Springdale, Arkansas, that the Watkins Avenue Bridge Overpass, which spans Interstate Highway 49 running east and west, is hereby named after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in recognition of Dr. King's legacy and vision for freedom, justice, and equality.
Okay, council?
I make a motion that the resolution pass?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Is there anyone that would like to say anything else? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
Carry's five two.
All right, thank you very much. We're at item 12, an ordinance committee, Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one item before us last week and I believe it was recommended for approval. It's actually a bonus program that allows the mayor to hand out as he sees fit throughout the year. Kobe, I believe, is zooming and he can probably answer more questions. I'll go ahead and read the ordinance first. An ordinance establishes an employee performance compensation fund declaring an emergency and for other purposes. And I believe, like I said, Kobe's on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. We had some discussion on this the other night as to if we wanted to use an ordinance to create a separate fund. And, and I understand the mayor does have the purview to do this, but we thought this would create some guardrails and accountability to the council on how this money was spent. So I did check with Cody in accounting and we are able to, we are able to take the 10% out of the surplus from the previous year. So at the end of the year, we would total up what our surplus is and we would be able to take 10% of that surplus. That way, if we have a surplus, we have money to do bonuses. If we don't, then we won't have that money in there. So it can accumulate and build and it gives the mayor another tool to promote incentives for employees to operate at top performance.
I'll make a motion that the ordinance pass?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Other questions or comments?
I, I just wanted to remind Kobe that he assured me that he'd give a detailed report on this account during the budget process.
We'll do it. And you're also getting a financial update. You're getting, you wanted some fund information at the next committee meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, at the next committee meeting, Cody and Sabre's office are preparing a financial report for us. So we'll go over the, the general fund and all the funds within the general fund and the eight other funds outside the general fund. So we'll go over everything at the next committee meeting as well.
Any other comments or questions? Anybody in the room? All right, we'll call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 13, finance committee and Chairman Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Do you want to handle this, Amelia? I think Amelia handled these at the committee meeting.
I did. Thank you. We have four items on tonight's agenda and the first, actually two, are grants for water. One is water and sewer easement. It's a resolution authorizing the grant of waters and sewer easement across property owned by the City of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas. This is presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney. Would you like me to read the second one as well?
We took these together in committee. Do you want to do it separate now or together?
Let's do them separate if you don't mind, since they're technically two separate resolutions. But yeah, both of these, A and B are both in connection with the Shaw Park project. One will be a, the one that's just red is a water sewer easement. The next one is granting utility easement.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, so this is 13A. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item B is a resolution authorizing the grant of a utility easement across property owned by the City of Springdale, Benton County, Arkansas, presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Yeah, this is, this is the utility easement for the same project. And I will point out, Mr. Harriman pointed out there was a typo in the acknowledgement on this easement where Ms. Jeffis's name was misspelled. That's been corrected.
Move resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
The third item is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of funds to acquire property from Margaret Barber and Larry Bunch from the Gene George Boulevard Extension Project, Elm Springs Road to County Line Road, project number 23BPS4, presented by Ernest Kate, City Attorney.
Thank you. As I mentioned at the committee meeting, this would authorize an additional amount of compensation of $5,109 to acquire the easements across this property without the need to file eminent domain proceedings. And they provided documentation as for the additional compensation. We thought this was reasonable to bring forward for consideration.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Okay, call for the vote?
Carry seven zero.
Final item under finance is a resolution of intent regarding the financing of the Western Corridor Transmission Main Project, presented by Heath Ward, Springdale Water Utilities.
As part of our master planning and financial planning, we had built into that the, the use of $60 million of bond money in which to construct the Western Corridor on the west side of town as well as a water tank and to enhance this water and, or excuse me, the sewer system in the Johnson Basin, which will improve the sewer flow in a bulk of Springdale for future growth. And we ask for the council's approval and be happy to answer any further questions council may have.
Move the resolution pass.
Before, before you make a motion, I just want to satisfy Shep Russell on this because part of the title wasn't read. I just want to make sure the entire title's read. So it's a further resolution of intent regarding the financing of the Western Corridor Transmission Main Project and the Johnson Robinson Force Main and Gravity Sewer Project. Just wanted to make sure that was clear for the record.
That would be correct.
Now the banker can hire another limo.
Move resolution pass on the second reading.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions, comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eve. Item 14, police and fire committee and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had two items come before us at our committee meeting and both of these were forwarded with recommendation for approval. The first one is dealing with some equipment they're going to purchase. And I'll read the title of the resolution. It is a resolution equip, accepting a grant from the Arkansas Public Safety Equipment Grant Program, authorizing the mayor to sign the grant agreement to appropriate funds and to waive competitive bidding. And Chief is here if you have any questions. And I believe, Chief, you said the taxes will be paid out of another fund. Can you expand on that, please?
Yes, taxes are not included in this and the grant wouldn't cover them anyway because the grant was exactly for the amount of the equipment. We'll need to use $7,239.38, $38 out of drug seizure funds to pay for the taxes on this equipment.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Motion and second. That includes city sales taxes, doesn't it, Chief?
Yes.
All right. All right, do we have a motion and a second? Any other questions or comments? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
The other resolution is a resolution authorizing the destruction of old police records.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item 15, I'll turn over to Ernest, our city attorney.
Thank you. We've kind of gone around the horn tonight. We've had two annexations. We've had, we've had granted two easements. And item 15 would be to a resolution setting a hearing date to petition a, to abandon a storm drainages easement on property located with the City of Springdale, Arkansas, as required by statute. This would set the public hearing for February 11th. I believe this is because it's been relocated because of a current development going on at this location is why it's being abandoned. The action would be to pass a resolution which would set the public hearing for February 11th.
I make a motion the resolution pass?
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Other questions, comments, concerns? Anyone in the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Item 16 is similar. It is a resolution setting a hearing date to petition to vacate, a petition to vacate a portion of East Randall Woby Lane. That would also set the public hearing for February 11th and in your packet. If you recall, when the highway 265 project was done, a portion of Randall Woby Lane was rerouted, which the old right-of-way was never vacated, which created a gap for the property owner. So this would be the next step in eliminating that old right-of-way. And this would set the public hearing for February 11th.
Move the resolution be adopted?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? All right, let's call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Yeah, go ahead.
And to complete our trip around the sun here, we've got two cleanup lien ordinances, one in Benton County, one on property in Washington County. The first one is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the City of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring emergency. This property located at 3728 Alliance Drive and 235 Glory Lane, Benton County.
Move ordinance pass?
Second.
We have a motion and second to pass the ordinance. Any other questions? All right, anybody in the audience need to speak to these properties? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carry seven zero.
Next item is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and declared an emergency. These two properties are 1023 Lowell Road and 836 J Lane, Washington County.
Move ordinance pass?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the ordinance. Other comments, questions? Anyone in the audience concerning these properties? All right, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Move emergency clause be adopted?
Second.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carry seven zero.
All right, council, item 20. We put on here a discussion on the date of the next city council meeting, committee meeting, I'm sorry. It's, it would be scheduled for next Monday, which is a national holiday where city hall will be closed. Usually we boot these a day. We can do that without interfering with the planning commission meeting in here. Is that, is Tuesday, would next Tuesday work, the 21st? Tuesday will work? That okay for everybody? You're, you're out of town? Okay. Is that all right with everybody else? Okay, then let's do that. We'll just plan on meeting next Tuesday for our committee meeting. Do we need to take any kind of other action on that, Ernest? Okay. All right, good deal. Item 21, any comments from our city council members? City attorney?
No, sir.
Nothing from me.
So moved.
We have a motion to adjourn. That's what that means, everybody. If, if you're one.